Good evening all.
Good evening.
Good day.
Hey, Matt.
Hello.
Nanette, are we expecting anyone else who is not on?
Yes, we're expecting trustee McDonald and trustee Sattler.
Okay, great. I think it just turned five, so why don't we just wait a moment?
Thank you.
Hello all.
Hello, gentlemen.
Hi.
And lo que queda es bien poquito. Lo que queden es bien poquito, yeah, pero la cuestión es lo difícil va a ser las calculaciones.
Well, just want to let you know you're not on mute.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Good.
Gracias.
There, Mary Kate, I think we're complete now.
Okay, great. So I'd love to call to order the Springfield Technical Community College Board of Trustees regular meeting for Monday, October 24th, 2022. Nanette, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mary Kate Mearon.
Present.
Janine McDonald.
Present.
Betty Spocito.
Present.
Gladys Beth Garcia. Maurice Lindsay. Tonya Butler Perez. Samalid Hogan.
Present.
Bill Johnson.
Present.
Norm Poldan.
Present.
Jeff Sattler.
Present.
And Max Starks.
Present.
We do have a forum today.
Yes, thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the trustee annual meeting and retreat minutes meeting of September 23rd, 2022?
I make a motion, we accept annual trustee minutes.
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Discussion. Nanette, would you please call the roll to accept the September 23rd, 2022 trustee annual meeting and retreat minute?
Yes, Mary Kate Mearon.
Yes.
Janine McDonald.
Yes.
Betty Spocito.
Yes.
Gladys Beth Garcia, Maurice Lindsay. Tonya Butler. Samalid Hogan.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
I'm gonna abstain, I was not there.
Norm Poldan.
Yes.
Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
And Max Starks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Much. We had a couple of committee reports, both on October 13th, 2022. Matt, would you mind give us a high level of the audit committee?
Sure, Madam Chair, thank you. Good evening, everyone. You know, so on October 13th, at our audit committee meeting, we started with a report out of the required communications and financial statement highlights for STCC and STCC Foundation. Michael Cosgrove, partner, and Lisa DiGusto, audit manager from O'Connor and Drew PC, presented the fiscal year 2022 required communications and financial statements to the audit committee. O'Connor and Drew performed both the audit for STCC as well as the STCC Foundation this year. O'Connor and Drew PC issued an unmodified opinion on both the STCC and the STCC Foundation financial statements, and noted there were no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies within the report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. There were no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management, and no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We then had a report out on this STCC Assistance Corporation. Karen Smith, audit partner from Cone Resnick, presented the fiscal year 2022 financial statements for the STCC Assistance Corporation. Cone Resnick issued an unmodified opinion on the STCC AC financial statements and noted there were no material audit adjustments. We concluded with the meeting with a motion that was approved to recommend to the Board of Trustees Committee on Ways and Means, the approval of the fiscal year 2022 financial statements and audit as presented.
Great. Thank you so much, trustee Starks. Given this, Dr. Cook, I don't think we need to approve these minutes because we approved them, didn't we, and Ways and Means later that afternoon? Is that correct?
I'm pretty sure, I believe because Ways and Means took that in, that that has been handled from a governance standpoint, correct?
Great, thank you so much. So, trustee Starks, we then went in, as you know, right into that committee in Ways and Means meeting held that same day. Would you like to give a brief overview there too, sir, please?
Sure thing, thank you, Madam Chair. So obviously also, on October 13th, we started with the fiscal year 2022 audit update, you know, followed by the motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 financial statements and audit. It was approved at the Ways and Means Committee. We then went through our normal agenda, starting with the cash flow projection update, followed by fiscal year 2023 enrollment update, where notably preliminary fall 2022 credits are approximately even with the fall 2021, favorable to the budget assumption of minus seven percent decline from fiscal year 2022. Assuming spring 2023 credits are at budget, credits for the full academic year are projected to be approximately 3.5% up ahead of budget. We then had a fiscal year 2023 revenue and spending update, where notably there's an increase in tuition and fee revenue associated with enrollment exceeding budget that I just mentioned. And we also had an increase due to the state appropriation revenue of $454,000. And gave his president's perspective before we then adjourned the meeting.
Much, trustee Starks, appreciated. Do I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes of the Committee on Ways and Means that was held on Thursday, October 13th, 2022?
Bill Johnson, motion to accept.
Jeff Sattler, second.
Great, thank you. Do discussion. Here I am, Nanette, would you please call the roll to accept the Committee on Ways and Means minute meetings of October 13th, 2022?
Yes, Mary Kate Mearon.
Yes.
Janine McDonald.
Yes.
Betty Spocito.
Yes.
Gladys Beth Garcia, Maurice Lindsay. Tonya Butler Perez. Samalid Hogan.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Norm Poldan.
Yes.
Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
And Max Starks.
Yes.
Thank you.
So much. Really great news to have a solid audit, everyone, right? Including our engagement with our administration, the Ways and Means Committee, so thank you so much. We'll continue to look at sustainability within the college. And that's all on the forefront, as you know, there's so much going on in 2023, so looking forward to that. So, Dr. Cook, I think you're up for your perspective before we go into our presentations a little bit later.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair, and good evening trustees, good to see you. You know, just a few items to help bring a bit of a focus to, and then the heart of it really is hearing from our consultants from Campus Works to really walk you through and facilitate a conversation with all of you about strategic planning. So I'll get to that piece, but again, if I take that next slide, I wanted to pull out part of the deck that was put in front of Ways and Means, again, just so I put that in front of the full board. And again, there's a lot of information here. Again, Ways and Means is a tremendous, I think, venue for both the board but also administration to really have conversations as we try to see our way through all this sort of unclarity and especially when it comes to enrollment. So you'll see again the trend, pretty remarkable to think about where we were even as recently as 2015, 2016. What, you know, is hard to predict is if that, in fact, is a true floor that you'll see there, where we thought we were going to go below 70,000 credits, which again is pretty incredible, given that in the not-too-distant past, we were over 140,000 credits, pretty sober-y, but you'll see, we beat the projection. And not only does it help give us a little bit of a steadiness this year, but for every dollar that we potentially can save, for every little bill back on the revenue side, it gives us a little bit more flexibility. I don't want to overpromise that, a little bit more flexibility on things like a building 20, school health relocation, that's going to be even more costly, given what we know from supply considerations. So again, just wanted to show you the trend to the full board, the fact that we did beat the projection, and the fact that we're going about flat this fall is really, really helpful. Again, it's not like we immediately bounce back with 10% up. And again, for context, we probably are one of only two or three community colleges of the 50-day Massachusetts that are seeing a flat or just a bit, a bit better. Almost by definition, most of our other sister institutions are down 6%, 7%, 8%, 9%. So that's a little bit on enrollment and certainly its connection to budget. I'll take the next one. Regarding the gala, I know some of our trustees went, I invite you to share with one another, but this was an incredible. These are the things that you do as an institution, you celebrate milestones, and we had our 55th anniversary. And because of COVID, because of everything, we had an opportunity to really also designate it as a resilience awards, and we gave out one to a few of the leaders in our community, I won't revisit all of that, but the fact that we had it at the Marriott, which had just recently gone through, if you read Mass Live, $50 million worth of renovations, we couldn't have timed the weather better even, it was that Thursday where it punched back up to 70 degrees. People were outside on that sixth-floor roof deck, pretty, pretty special. So again, if you could bottle that vibration in there, you would know the college really does have tremendous support from its communities. And again, I just wanted to call that out because we also, on top of all that goodwill raised over 100,000 through the foundation, the kinds of things you want to hear and know is occurring there. The last thing is on the personnel side. We have posted, and I've shared a little bit about this, the desire to hire a chief equity officer. As much as you can expect, that work is embedded in my role and in senior leadership. We really found that it would be helpful to have that point, that internal consultant, if you will, to focus on that work. So we begin in earnest. I'm very pleased to share that trustee McDonald has been willing to serve on that search committee, so you will have a trustee there front and center for that process as it unfolds. It's going to be a modest pool. We have only about 14 applications right now, but again, I'm fairly encouraged by the candidates that we see in there. This is just a very, very discreet and unique skill set that we are certainly seeking, like a lot of institutions or organizations, not only in our region, but really across the US. So I'll certainly keep you posted, it's cabinet-level, so it'll be direct report to me. And again, as I said, a very important focal point for us. So that's just a little bit about enrollment, about our activities, like our 55th anniversary, and then on the personnel side. And before, again, we transition to strategic planning, let me just pause and see if there might be any questions from the board.
Yes, Mr. Dr. Cook, do you think that we did better because our advertising seems to be a lot cleaner? And it's more spread out, it seems to be, you think that might have helped our registrations?
I would like to think that. I also know, trustee Poldan, that it'll be hard for us to ever draw a one-to-one view there on marketing dollars or perception, and that what we know is the last two years have just been really, really tough. So in terms of new students that we see to the college, we're not really even back to pre-pandemic levels, so I don't want to over subscribe to this idea that we have communicated better or differently. We again see an uptick, certainly on the new side, but I've shared before with the board, it's more like a one-third, two-thirds proposition with recruitment and retention. If we can do even a little bit better with retaining the students we have, that has an even stronger value proposition for us than on the recruitment side. And so that's what we're hoping, is that we can steady out the retention piece, because students have definitely struggled in a COVID world with the retention side. We've seen the retention piece there, especially a fall-to-spring retention slide a little bit on us. Again, some of that is when students didn't have a choice with what kind of courses they took online, or a heavy hybrid option was all that they had. But we'll see again when they actually have a choice, because of course, what we actually see now is students still, for better or for worse, still choosing online when they have that choice. So we're trying to work through all the data to better understand this. So I guess that's the long answer to a very important question.
If I may, Bill Johnson, I think another issue, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, STCC is the only technical community college in the Commonwealth, so it's real hard to do a true compare and contrast with the other, you know, colleges, so that I think that makes it real hard to see, you know, to kind of balance what we're doing, to see if it's right or wrong, there's nothing to compare it to. I don't know, is that entirely true, Dr. Cook, or is that?
It is, you know, I definitely tout with my counterparts in our higher ed world about our differences. I think that that contrast helps us, it shows us, and we can be proud of that technical mission. And there are certainly programs that with their lab or their clinical component, we need to do in person, and we do them in very unique and different ways. Again, our school of health and the incredible amount of programs there, but also manufacturing programs with CNC equipment. These are very different from a lot of the other community colleges. So it's not quite apples and oranges, I mean, in some ways, we're still the most affordable, accessible institutions in our regions. So it's a starting point for many, many students, so there are some comparables that way.
One last comment too, I unfortunately wasn't able to attend the event, but just really special thanks to Dr. Butler, all of your hard work putting on an incredible, from what I hear, event, so I just wanted to say thank you for that hard work. I've heard nothing but rave reviews, so wanted to extend that, the thank of the board trustees and myself, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate that.
And you'll all be pleased to share, yes, through Dr. Butler and our advance from external affairs folks, there was a great lift, Shay's team did a phenomenal job. A blast from the past for some of the trustees, Frank Quigley, former trustee, is also a member of the STIC Foundation Board. And he was the project lead for the renovations there at the Marriott, and really helped champion on behalf of the college, them hosting us for their maiden voyage with this event. So please know for many of you trustees, Frank continues to be engaged with the college. I see him from time to time, giving that foundation piece, and he was so thrilled, everyone. He was so thrilled that night to see it all come together, and of course, being the alum that he is, he's quite proud.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Dr. Cook. We're in a transition right into strategic planning with Campus Works. I know, Dr. Butler, you have Eileen Cusick with you, so why don't you give us an update of where we are?
And let me jump into, I know Shay's traveling, she's on there, but no, I'll help with this. We have our co-chairs here, so Eileen Cusick, faculty, Eileen, thanks for being a part of this tonight, and Shay Butler, who are our co-chairs for our strategic planning task force. By way of reminder, trustee Betty Alexax Pacito is the trustee liaison and serves on that task force as well. So I'd rather, I think, let's really give time where it's well worth it, Eileen and Shay, where we'll have Jevon Brain, who's the lead, and Samantha Kessler from Campus Works. Really dive right in, Jevon, let me turn it over to you to give a little bit of the framing for tonight, engaging with trustees, who are an important part of the Campus Works process. I've been working myself directly with Jevon, Samantha, and their team, really since the start of their consultancy, we're making excellent progress. And again, that's what I would say is, with this process is as important as the outcome, as the product at the end of the day, and again, we're really doing well with one foot in front of the other, and building a wonderful foundation across the college, so that by the time we land there, in terms of our priorities, there really won't be any surprises. But Jevon, let me have you share the outlook and again, goals that you have for tonight with the board.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, President Cook. Samantha and I are so excited to be here with you this evening. We always appreciate and love engaging with you all as it relates to the future of STIC. And we've been doing some very intentional work with the Strategic Planning Task Force there, and Shay and Eileen have been amazing in their leadership, as well as Dan Striaka and Donna Garza and Nanette, in helping us get all of this off the ground. President Cook also has to hear from us quite a bit, and so we always enjoy interacting with him, and he provides great insight for how we can continue to move this work forward. So for tonight, we're really just hoping to get some feedback from you all in regards to the vision of the institution. We have began outlining the ideal student experience for students there at STIC. We have also engaged in several different workshops with the staff, employees, and students. We've done focus groups with a group of students there. So we've collected a lot of information that is going to start informing the strategic goals and objectives in your strategic plan. But like I said, from you, we're hoping to have a discussion about the vision of the institution moving forward. And so Samantha and I will kind of just walk through some prompts, and we hope that you'll engage with us and kind of give us your feedback in what you're thinking as the board. Okay. So we'll keep moving forward there, and I think Samantha is going to share her screen with us. Let's go to that strategic framework slide. So we always like to call your attention back to the strategic framework. You can see vision, you know, right up front and center there, which really helps us lead into building some of those strategic goals and objectives. So that's kind of where our focus is. And then if we go to the next slide, you can see kind of our framework in terms of how we're going to build this out. We're going to have strategic goals, objectives, really specific action plans and tactics, which there's going to be some responsibility there, but that's how we're hoping to actually work towards that mission and vision.
So our objective really for today is to focus on the vision statement. We're going to bring it in front of you in a second, but we want you to review this, to discuss it as it relates to our vision for the strategic plan and what we hope to see in the next three to five years. This review and discussion can result in an affirmation of the statement, saying, hey, we think it works well, or we can kind of discuss some ways to edit, refine, or update this vision based on the direction that we hope to take the institution in the next several years. So what we really want to do is distinguish the vision from the mission statement. We always talk about the mission, you know, the various things we celebrate about their mission, the technical aspects. It's focused on student success and student support, and really that is our reason for being, the reason we come to STIC every day, and we serve these students every day. However, the vision statement is going to be more aspirational, that's why it's at the top of that pyramid that you saw before, and it's really going to outline what we want to do, and really set our sights forward and looking into the future.
So when we think of that vision statement, it should really define the long-term goals of STIC. It should be different from where the college currently is, and be more future-oriented, or you know, symbolize some ambition. Also aspirational, inspirational, motivational. We try to be as clear as concise when we're shaping these and drive toward action, and kind of serve as a filter for other decisions that can be made at the institution.
We wanted to put some sample vision statements in front of you, so I'll start with the ones on the left-hand side, and just want to call out a few notable things that sort of make these more visionary. The organizations on the left are not organizations of higher ed, but they contain some similar words. I noticed the word "world" in several of those statements, really demonstrating their ambition, or are things like "the most," or "the place to be," or "the organization" to really be highlighted for their services or their work. All very visionary. On the right-hand side are some examples of vision statements for community colleges, or two-year colleges, or some technical colleges as well. I see similar types of words reflecting that idea, things like "premier," even things talking about creating that community. That's really a visionary-type thing, if you think about it, communities don't just appear out of nowhere, they're really cultivated, and some intentional work behind supporting and creating that. So we want you to take a look at STIC's vision statement and think about ways we can really convey that future-looking, that future look, and that ambition that we really strive for.
So you see here on the screen, STIC's current vision statement. It reads, Springfield Technical Community College will be a dynamic, multicultural learning community where students grow in character, intellect, and self-confidence. So as you see this on the screen here, and as we were kind of reading it aloud, we'd like to kind of know from you, what do you like about the current vision statement, or what kind of speaks to you about that current statement?
This is trustee Stark, so I like the word "dynamic." And I've got questions about the other words, but I like the word "dynamic."
Okay, great. And we'll get to your question, so we'll start with you, trustee Stark, when we come to our next part of this exercise. But is there anyone else who can kind of comment on what they like about this current statement?
I like the idea of bringing in community, because we are a community college and we try to foster those relationships. So I do like that brought out within the statement.
I would echo that as well. The learning community part of it really is a standout for me. And I know we're not to the problem-solving part of the exercise, but instead of multicultural, I would have been a diverse, diverse learning community would stand out more for me.
Thank you, trustee Hogan. Anyone else?
I appreciate, you know, the fact that it doesn't just hone in on the academic portion, but wanting to serve the student as a whole and see them do well, you know, all the way around, you know, highlighting character and select and self-confidence, I think that's really important.
I also agree on that.
Same here, Betty.
That's great.
It's hard to call out the characters, though, that you want to bring. I don't know if there is, I know we're not, we're going to get there eventually, but come up with a statement that is inclusive of the whole being, and being able to put that in in words that people would understand.
I think it's a good start, though, how we started here. It's a good start, you know?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Mm hmm. Absolutely.
This is Bill Johnson. Is this where we would in? I mean, STCC is more than just, you know, it's like. I don't know if this is the place to put it like from 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 a two year degree to workforce development or something like that, kind of like where encompasses everything. Like one sentence or a couple of words. I don't know if this is the place or go someplace else, but anyway.
Yeah.
You know, sort of like it's from workforce development to, you know. A degree, you know, a degree or whatever. I don't know.
Yeah, like some of more of those outcomes pieces, you're you're thinking towards some of those outcomes will be the outcome of this.
Yeah, I don't know if that's where this that belongs or someplace else, but anyway.
Great feedback. Samantha, let's move on to, we've kind of organically moved here. But but we think about in the simplest, most compelling way possible, we have a few questions that might help us. Get to the place where where many of you have already been kind of leading towards. So let's go into that first question. When you think about the most ambitious outcome, where sick can be in 15 years from now, what do you think about? And I'd like to even offer President Cook an opportunity to weigh in here. I won't, I'm putting him on the spot, but I didn't prepare him for this. But I but I also know, you know, he has some very thoughtful vision for the institution. And so President Cook, I want to invite you to, you don't have to go first, but but you can chime in here too, if you have anything as we're we're engaging kind of in this discussion. We know there are several priorities for stick that have come up through through the strategic planning process in terms of the technical mission. In terms of academic programs and prioritization of those programs and and you know, the major innovations that are happening in regards to healthcare. And and funding that have come through and technology and modalities. But but we'd like to hear from you as you think about kind of that ambitious place for the for the.
This is Jeff Satter. I I always look at where still had said with technical community college. You know, you look at 15 years from now, we should be the premier institution that reaches out to business for what. They need for employees on the technical side that we should have and be the leader in that regard. I I look at the Richland Community College mission or vision statement. Senior Source Education Workforce Training. It's a partnership with the community and the business community. I think that's that's a, you know, the technical side of what we do, I think should be in the forefront of our vision.
I would I would echo those thoughts with the literacy. I do think, you know. As a primary role of community college or part of our mission is that contribute to the economic growth of the state. And also, you know, global competitiveness of the state for the education and the training and all the services. That we provide to continue to workforce improvement.
Thank you.
And this trustee starts, I agree with what's been said so far, you know, I'm thinking words around. How do we have a direct link between graduates and an actual job? Right? I mean, I'm thinking about our vision would be for again, and I have graduates and they're they're kind of floundering. It kind of goes back to where trustee Satter was going, which is we're in, we're in sync with what the community needs are from a a job opportunity perspective. And when our, when our, our students graduate, there's a direct job waiting for them.
Yeah, and I I think a lot of this conversation, you know, once again, comes back to some of those outcomes for students. And someone even mentioned earlier, you know, is that transfer? Is that is that a job, you know, depending on the the program that the student is seeking, you know, what does that look like? Also, you know, does stick explore some strategic options for bachelor's degrees? You know, in in particular workforce areas where they can greatest serve its community and and in that industry, that that workforce alignment that you all have been talking about. And so those are definitely some pieces we've been talking about in this process as well, but but please keep going.
I think that you you're talking, Javon, to student success. And what does that look for like for the individual student? And that's why I think we need a very diverse kind of tactical. I know we'll eventually get there. But what does that look like for the student? I want to make sure we do pull in the student because that's really what we're here for. So I don't know how we do that, but there there's a lot of, you know, words that can go for around student success.
Mm hmm. Absolutely.
Mary Kay, this is Bill John. I think I think you hit the nail on the head. It's 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 all about student success. I'll use myself. I I went to STCC, I took one course, which allowed me to get my auto damage appraisers licensing license. Back in, I forget, seventy seven or seventy eight. And just my ability to get that appraisers license, I have built everything I have just from that one small. I forget even forget what it was, a three month course or whatever the hell it was. That allowed me, you know, I if I didn't have that license, I wouldn't have been open up the body shop that I got into towing, then, you know. Fast forward, I got 70 employees now on multiple locations, but just that one opportunity. Has has been everything I've built from. So I guess that's why I'm I when I, that's where I'm coming from, when I always talk about workforce development and I'm not against a two year or four year degree. But we we need to be conscious that there's a lot of success stories with workforce development. And I think everybody's kind of touched on it. It's all about getting a job and about all where people end up. So I don't know, it's hard to put that into words. There's a lot there to unpack, but. To me, the STCC is more than just a a piece of paper. It's just about giving life changing opportunities. Anyway, that's.
Yeah. And to your point, that could come through various means. It doesn't always have to be a two or four year credential. It could be a non credit. You know, opportunity as well, some sort of exposure.
That that's the point I'm trying to make. It's it's not always the 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 piece of paper. It's all about the the ability to give the opportunity to move forward and every individual take. You know, we I read something the other day that that we as a society need to guarantee the. The equity of opportunity. But we cannot guarantee equality of outcome, if that makes sense. So we need to try to make sure everybody has the opportunity to move. And then what they do with it is 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 up to them. And I don't know how to to to, you know, put that in the words, but I I guess that's why I have a special place for STCC. Is is because like I said, I didn't graduate from SCC, but I took that one course. And just basically just it it's everything I've I've built was from the ability to get that appraisers license. So anyway.
I hear you. I hear you talking about that multi-pronged approach, right? STCC's role is really to provide the opportunity and to help ensure student success from an ethical perspective, right? As as an access based institution. That said, STCC is still a microcosm of the larger society exists within. So it won't completely by itself shift the condition students enter after receiving whatever type of training they receive from the institution. And we've still got to work on that from a larger societal perspective. But I I appreciate that feedback. That's really helpful in terms of what the college should be working towards from a visionary perspective. I know Samantha has one more question for us, but but I first want to check to see if anyone wants to answer anymore from this question.
Well, this is Jeff Satter. I'm picking up what Bill was saying. Many times confused with your mission statement versus your vision statement. You know, the missions are technical. The vision is, you know, like you say, it's very difficult. When I started Louisville Bank, my marketing company like took us a day to to determine the difference between what your vision is versus what your mission is. And I think sometimes that can be confusing, but you got to think, in my opinion, like what Bill is saying, you think out of the box. You know, within a reasonable cost as well should be in that vision. We can't let these students not come to college because of the economic impact if we can help it. And to give everybody an equal opportunity to build their own dream. That's the vision, you know, you got to look at it. I think you got to really think out of the box on that vision statement. Because it's different than the mission statement. And I sometimes it confused between the two.
Absolutely, absolutely. We always go back to to the mission being your reason for being, right? The reason that that you exist. But the vision is it's what you want to do, right? And sometimes it's not always the most attainable. It doesn't have to be the most attainable thing because it's something you should be constantly working towards. And and thank you, thank you for for bringing that up because it can be very challenging for institutions to be there. Before we move on to our next question, and we just have a few more moments with you. As we don't want to take your whole meaning, your whole meaning, right? But we want to make sure that you're weighing in here. But I just want to reread the vision statement one more time before we go into this kind of final question we have for you. And the vision is Springfield Technical Community College will be a dynamic multicultural learning community. Where students grow in character, intellect and self confidence. Samantha?
Sure. And I just want to, I'll bring up the the next question, but even take these words. And I I'm not sure when the last update of your vision statement was, but there there's. I think we're, our world is changing. And I think even just to say we're dynamic, I almost think like doesn't cut it anymore, right? If you're, if you're good with that, that's fine. But like, I think that's, that is now no longer a stretch to be dynamic. We had to be dynamic through COVID and change on on the drop of a dime, right? But what what is more than dynamic? What describes that better now that we're kind of? Most, for the most part, coming out of that and our world is completely different. What is the next step instead of being dynamic? What what can we do to kind of push us even further? So that kind of gets to this next question. What changes would you suggest to STCC's vision statement? And this could be changes to individual words. We can think about incorporating sort of more of that outcome based language. You know, it's really up to up to you and this group to sort of discuss ways to edit that. And if you so choose and and Javon and I can work then offline to take your all ideas and sort of synthesize this into a recommended edit.
I don't know about the exact words, trustee Starks. I don't know about the exact words at this point, but my reaction when I read it was, I didn't. For the first part of it, dynamic multicultural learning community. I didn't know how different that was than today, so I didn't feel like it was big enough. It's like this is more of the same and this is a vision statement. And then the last part, the the growing character, intellect and self confidence, I like that. But I don't know how we would actually measure that and know that that's actually happening. So that was my the feedback I want to give earlier.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Yeah, well, I would agree. I think that, you know, we did talk about how important the technical aspect was for our our college. And then somehow bringing in opportunity, access to opportunity. So I'm just throwing things out hoping something sticks and then. What, you know, Bill, you were talking about is, you know, knowing where to go for the one thing that helped you launch. And I don't know how you put that into words. You you're all a better wordsmith, but it's important that we just kind of, you know, pull out those couple of things about the college.
This is Betty and. When I see Springfield Technical Community College and I'm not, believe me, I am not coming forth with a new name for the college. But the healthcare field and all of the courses that we have related to healthcare. To me are technical. When I see the word technical, I think I'm more into. I don't know, STEM or creativity that way as opposed to health. And the dynamic. I agree on that. Is there a better word for dynamic?
Thank you. That's fascinating. In terms of kind of the conversation around a technical, what we kind of see as technical academic programs, right? We think about the career and technical mission, CTE, career and technical education mission of a community colleges generally throughout the country. And so when we talk about from the state perspective or the national perspective, fascinatingly enough, healthcare actually falls. A lot of times in that CTE conversation, when you think about like nursing or phlebotomy or or different programs. You know, that that kind of fall under that health moniker. But but that's fascinating to think about. So we can, we can consider some of those pieces too. President Cook, you came off mute. I see you there. You did. You did put me on the spot, Javon. You did. I just a a little bit of perspective for trustees. This is hand in glove kind of work. And obviously Campus Works will go back, put pen to paper and do some drafting. So don't think you have to crack it all tonight. I wanted to share this context with trustees. One of the things that we have grappled with internally for the college is almost this dual outlook. Around transfer and all of the other things that you've talked about. And the idea of not trying to treat one that it somehow comes at the expense of the other. Because we certainly, and by the way, our mission statement to the point around what do we do? What's our reason? The mission statement remains on helping students transform their lives, but we don't actually say technical in our mission statement. So envision is a chance for us to be explicit for the first time in a long time. The question becomes, how do we work in the transfer piece without seeming to relegate it? That's a real dance. Again, there's some English majors out there who could help us, but I offer that because. My on the side conversation with Javon and Samantha and others, we have definitely talked about bachelor's degrees. Again, the question is right there. What's the most ambitious outcome for the college? For me, though, I don't actually want to limit it to just bachelor's degrees. Imagine 15 years from now. Some version of that we have evolved to be the most comprehensive education ecosystem. Imagine that. Here's the translation. We have Head Start on campus. We have hundreds of students in high school earning our credits. And we have pathways to career and transfer. So to me, the future of higher education is not silos and not insular, but it is integration. And so how do we build that potentially into our vision? Because then that allows you to get at all those pieces and parts that really make us from a short term training that changed the life because they needed that specific credential. To the tremendous amount of healthcare training to manufacturing, engineering, all those other elements that we have. But perhaps comprehensive ecosystem where we are at the heart of that. Is perhaps a vision that we might be able to aspire towards. That's great. Well, I think we are coming up on our time, but I just want to give an opportunity for any of the, any other kind of comments in regards to any changes. Trustees would suggest. Okay, well, we so appreciate you allowing us to join you for today. As you can see here, there is a, we're going to zoom in on this and take the feedback that you all have given. And present some options for for your approval ultimately. So so this will not be the last that that you see us and and once again, just thank you so much for taking an opportunity to participate. Just so you know, some pieces that are coming up, we're going to be doing a values workshop with the college to affirm the value, the college values with the employees there. We're also preparing for the future summit, which will take place during professional day in January. And so we're really excited about that and and hope that you may be able to engage. And maybe participate in some of the ed talks that take place there around some of these topics, these very topics that that we've discussed today. So once again, thank you, President Cook and Chair Murren, and we look forward to engaging with you.
Nice job.
Javon, Samantha, thank you so much. It's really, really great to see how we're being strategic. I'll steal the word that we're working on to really kind of establish the framework as we continue to move forward and everything that we have learned. From from Netche also. And and thank you again, Samantha, Javon. Campus Works, really, really important work. Appreciate you pushing us to and we'll clarify as we move forward. So thank you, everyone, for your your help this. So thank you, everyone, for your um your help this evening. Um, really, also a couple others. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I interrupt someone? Up just the feedback. Um, you know, Dr. Cook, as we um approach and at March, I hate to say, Aretha, everyone that marches around the corner um with Neti, with our visit, just want to keep um all ask you to keep us all updated. What you need from the trustees, um, any type of visitation, presentations. I'm sure um we really will start working on that visit very shortly. Um, and to to that end, we've got trustee McDonald, who in a little bit will just give us a high level of how the bylaw review is going, which is so great. I want to thank you in advance um for for leading that ad hoc committee. I know you've been doing um a ton of work um with some of the other trustees. So um at that moment, why don't I turn it over to you, trustee McDonald, if that's okay? Um, just to give us a an overview of how that work is going um and let us know how things are are progressing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, it's certainly been a pleasure. We've been getting a lot of work done. Um, our committee members include trustee Hogan, trustee Butler Perez and myself. Uh, we've also been joined uh by trustee Spacito, so that's been really awesome. She came and offered some wonderful insight. Um, and we've met three times so far, uh, once a week over the last three weeks. And we actually have two more meetings scheduled before the close of this year, but we've made tremendous progress. We started out by reviewing um the Neti concerns in regards to the board of trustee bylaws. We reviewed the slides that were presented at the board of trustee retreat, uh, retreat, excuse me, presented by um Dr. Pura. Um, and um, we also looked at some sample bylaw language from other regional community college institutions. And so we started out by prioritizing certain sections to be revised. And as we are starting to close out those sections, we intend to go back, which we already have gotten a bit of a head start on going through um the rest of the bylaws. But much of our last few weeks has been uh focused on the committee structure. So the definitions of the committees, which, you know, we lack in that area. Um, the number of committee meetings. And so you all will see when we come before you all to present um our full um, our full amendments of the trustee bylaws. You'll see that we reduced some of the meetings. Um, this was done also in collaboration, a consultation with Dr. Cook and um, you know, the CFO. Uh, we defined some definitions. We also added a committee, which many of us spoke about at the retreat and prior to. So everyone should expect to see a committee on facilities and capital improvements. Uh, we actually reduced the number of ways and means meetings. And and uh we also included, there was an area that was lacking on providing clarity on some of the authoritative policy. So we made some uh potential amendments to the compositions and functions of the board section, which is really just going to include a motion that was already taken by the board of trustees back in two thousand sixteen, formalizing that in our bylaws. Um, amending certain language like, what is, you know, a retreat versus an annual meeting? Or having our retreat be phrased as and referred to as our annual meeting and the timing of that. So for example, we've been having our annual meeting slash retreat in September, when the academic year is already rolling, priorities have already been set. And so we thought to actually make that happen in the spring. Um, Dr. Cook also thought it'd be an excellent time for us to tie that in with his annual review. And it'd be a great time for us to be able to help set priorities for um for the coming years. And so I also want to take a moment, open up the floor for um trustee Hogan to to chime in. She's been very active. We've been rolling up our sleeves, doing some homework, coming in with committee definitions, doing wordsmithing on the spot in the meetings. These have really been working meetings. And also, um, trustee Spacito, just, you know, if you want to chime in and just talk about your experience and um how the work is starting to progress.
Hi, um, so I I don't have much to add, Janay. I think you covered it all. I it's been a great opportunity to get more involved with um, you know, the nitty gritty and the bylaws. And I think it's um uh what I really appreciate, it it's 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 definitely making sure that the language is clear, it's simple, anyone can read it and understand it. Um, and um, just the collaboration between us trustees, it's been great. And I look forward to to sharing, you know, a draft with 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 this group, with the board when it's ready.
I'll put in a uh two cents. Um, I was at the meeting last week and I was just amazed at all the work that has been done. And um wordsmithing, um, looking at uh, do we need that? Or do we change it too? Um, but great job thus far and uh the, it's like the old additions, deletions. Um, but very, very good. And um, I think uh, I think the board will be pleased with the outcome uh as uh as we continue to roll along.
Thank you. Yeah, I look forward to um, if my memory serves me correctly, we need to be able to send um, you know, Neti some information on the progress that we have made. I'm very confident that, you know, what we send will be way more than just information on the progress that we have made and that we'll be able to come before the board in January with some form of a finalized, but not ratified by the rest of the board yet, of course. Um, version of the bylaws and, you know, one other thing to expect, I want to, you know, kind of prime you all to is that there may need to be some sort of review or training on the bylaws. Uh, because there are just some things that we noticed as we started to dig into it that we either, not that we weren't doing, but um there's just areas of clarity. Um, and just, you know, it's kind of opening up some light to how we've been doing things um and and how we should continue to to roll out the map moving forward.
I agree uh with that last statement, Janay, and I I and I do want to say that, you know, as a newer trustee um, jumping into the bylaws and and it's been a great experience for me and to kind of get more involved. But also, I do think that um that's so important that all of the trustees do are, you know, um, not reminded, but like you said, trained on some of the, like, to some of the things that we're trying, the intention of some of the things that we're putting in the bylaws. And that new committee is going to be um essential that people understand the role for that new committee as well.
And I think that um one of the outcomes will be, how often, in other words, do we do um a mini review every two years and a full review every five? Or uh but really putting it in writing with the the timeline in reviewing the the bylaws. What, when do we review them the next time?
Yeah, Betty, I think you're you're talking to um continuous improvement, right? And everything and working on this and and getting a push by Neti and and trustee McDonald, thank you so much for really digging in. Um, I have no doubt that the whole thing probably will be redlined where we only needed to do a couple of the bylaws. So so appreciative of you and your team, um, overachievers, which I definitely love. So thank you so much again. Looking forward to seeing what the ad hoc committee um does come out. This isn't new business. I just want to have one more comment before we go into new business. So um, as you know, Governor Baker extended uh meetings um through on Zoom through March of twenty twenty three. There has been some conversations of, you know, when can we really start being face to face? Um, trustee McDonald, I know you have a uh internal, external, I think in February. Uh, my idea was just to reach out to everyone, um, see where you stand so we can start a little bit uh more face to face into into the new year. Uh, because I think there's um just so much more that comes from these meetings and the interactions. Not to mention you're in the same room with someone um from a networking perspective. So my intent is to just to reach out to everybody, see how everyone is um starting a little bit sooner than potentially March. Um, and then we can start having some face to face meetings. I know we did that at the retreat. It was great to see everybody. Um, so we're hoping to to continue that moving forward. So just wanted to to make a comment there.
Uh, excuse me, may I also add, I forgot to mention that our meetings um have been in person for the ad hoc. So I just think it's a great preempt to, you know, what we can do in February. You know, I certainly don't mind that, but of course you want to get the consensus from everyone, but thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we're ready. Um, just want to make sure we do include everyone's comments. So I'll be reaching out to everybody um just to see where you are. Um, it is only October, um, so we've got a little bit of time, um, even when I was talking about March. But you know how time flies when it is in the winter. Um, so is there, is there any new business from anyone? Hearing none, our date of our next board meeting is November twenty eighth. Can't believe I'm already saying it. It's after Thanksgiving, right? Boo. Um, five o'clock, um, as of right now, we're going to be in Zoom. Um, so do I hear a motion to conclude the board of trustees regular meeting of Monday, October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two?
So move.
Second.
Discussion will be none. Janet, would you please call the role, please?
Yes, Mary Kate Murren?
Yes.
Janay McDonald?
Yes.
And Betty Spacito?
Yes.
Gladys Spets, Garcia, Maurice, Lindsay, Sonia, Butler, Perez, Samalid Hogan?
Yes.
Bill Johnson?
Yes.
Norm Jordan?
Yes.
Yes, Satter?
Yeah.
And Max Starks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, everybody. By the time, hopefully you have picked out your costume um for Halloween, um, or at least bought your candy in case kids show up, but please be safe. And look forward to seeing you soon. Have great, great days.